I'll mean in order if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation without individual religion and social ills.
Welcome everyone to our September 23 board meeting. Fall has begun, two days in, make mention that all of our board members are present tonight, and with that we entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Any questions from anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. And we will move on to our education report.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine, and we're going to start this evening with an update on our high school renovation by Mr. Jim Hanna from D.E. Engineering.
Well, it's September, and I'm here for our second report. We've had the construction activities working around students for quite some time now. It seems to be going very well. Mike and Mr. Ziegler and I have been in constant communication.
Mr. Hanna, just, I mean, no, I mean, if you could just use the microphone for us for our friends on TV.
I think you can release it.
Yeah, just pull it out. It's good?
Yep.
Okay. So it seems like the construction activities and the interaction with the students is going very well. So if I could just review some of the phasing. This area right here is Phase 1A, which was turned over to Mike, the trainer, and your maintenance staff. Phase 1B is this yellow area here, which is scheduled to be turned over at the end of October. That's on schedule. We'll turn that over. This area right here is currently under construction, 2A. That's some of the locker room areas, so the contractors are in there working. The gym, which is 1D, and the cafeteria, which is 1C. And there's activity in both those areas as well, and I'll show you further along as the presentation goes on. So here you see the rooftop units that serve those areas have been flown up on the roof and set in place. They've been energized and they're producing heating and cooling as needed. This is the trainer's area, which he just moved in, has been turned over. That's in Phase 1A. Here's Mike's area. There's the staff working in their area. It seems like they like their new space.
Nice digs.
Yeah, yeah, there's the, there's the maintenance staff's room. Here are the gym foundations. There's concrete in there now, but you can see there's a lot of rebar, some heavy, heavy concrete work, heavy construction, some more with the foundation work. These are the piers that are going to support the columns. We expect to see steel being erected next week on the gym, so that's moving along nicely. Some of the other work that's been conducted is we've been in the tunnel, the contractors have been in the tunnel, starting to do some of the early roughing. This is actually the tunnel under the 100 wing, and this pipe right here is a sanitary pipe that's going to carry the effluent from this building, from the 100 wing, and also from ringing rocks. So that's a, that's a pretty monumental task there, tying that all together. Here you can see the stormwater piping coming off the core room area that's running along the gym foundations. That's been in place. And here you see some demolition in Phase 2A. This was the old athletic director's storage area. Here are some of the locker rooms that have been demolished, getting ready to do some roughing in that area. Here you can see that Mike's lucky he got out of his office just in time because they started demolition in that, that old facility area. You can see the big hole in the wall there. And here's the, the old health suite that's been demoed, ready for roughing. So that phase of the project's going along very well. And here's some more demo. This was the ramp coming out of the athletic area that's going to be now be some steps and a new room added in there. As far as the exterior work, the site work, as I reported to you last week, the base course of this has been installed, this underground detention basin's been in, so a lot of this activity, activity is done for this phase, except the contractors already started to get some underground structures in for your turf field. And then as far as the cafeteria goes, you'll start, oops, sorry, I missed my button here. You'll start to see some of the foundation work start in this area. The activity will pick up there now that the gym foundations are done and steel's starting to move. So we're working the plan. We're getting there. Pieces of the Rubik's Cube are starting to fall in place. You know, as one phase is done, the staff's moving into the next phase, we're moving in there, so everything seems to be moving smoothly right now. Anybody got any questions?
I'm going to ask you every time, so are we on track?
So far, we are on track.
And what about the disruption to the students? How would you characterize it?
From my end, I think everything's going very well. I've been doing a lot of schoolwork. I think, as far as I'm concerned, and the communications I've had, it's been working with. Your students have been great. They've been following the pathways. I mean, they're just like, it's every day, you know? Unless anybody has any other comments on that.
I'd also like to add, the staff has been incredible to work with as well. Not only just the, the following of the rules and the changes that we put out to the students, but the high school staff has been extremely supportive and flexible when we've needed to move into some temporary facilities to give the contractors a little leadway on some different projects. They've been very flexible. The administration at the high school's been extremely cordial to us, to the contractors, and making sure that everything's flowing as smoothly as possible. So disruption to the school in general, students, faculty, it's been phenomenal up to this point. We've seen very little disruption whatsoever.
This part that we talked about in our initial presentation has been going very well. Communication's been great.
Thank you, Mr. Hanna. One thing I did want to point out is that we're going to need to be thinking about as we move into calendar building season, which typically doesn't happen until after the holidays, but next summer is really where there's just going to be a bulk of work being done, and we really need to consider delaying the opening of school until after the Labor Day holiday to get that extra week in. So I just want you to start kind of thinking that over because that really may make a huge difference for us being able to stay on task and on our timeline for the project. We'll delay that conversation for another time.
Shelley, I just had a real quick question about that, delaying the beginning of school. Would we still work with, try to work within the timeframe so that we would be finished the second week of June or around there?
Yes, because then that would give us a longer time, summertime for the following year. Because if we're going to be finishing, that would be the following year. That's the other, it's the summer we're finishing, so we're going to want that to be as long as possible too. But, but the next summer is the big summer for us to be able to get a lot done. Moving on, I wanted to talk just for a couple minutes about our community connections. This year, what we're trying to do is really put a focused effort on getting the word out as best that we can about all the things that we're trying to offer parents in, with regard to coming and learning about what we're doing in our schools. So you probably, you might have seen this or maybe something like this because it was still in draft form on Friday when we put the packet together, but we're working on putting a list of upcoming, what we're calling, community connections together for parents. And one of the things that we're working on is one-to-one parent meetings. We're going to offer four different meetings in, hosting two in the middle school and two in the high school, so that parents can be introduced to the Dial program and discuss the vision and the goals for the program, the take-home component of the program, the insurance and the policies, and all of the things that they need to be aware of prior to a rollout of this program. So those will be advertised. In fact, I think we did already start our advertising of those, but you can see from the handout that you received, they start in October, and actually, I think, yeah, they all start in October. Three in October and one in November. And the other thing we're trying to do is because we had a low turnout last year, but I, it's probably often because parents can't get out, is we're trying to piggyback on those meetings with a couple of other informational items that we think are important to parents. One is resources on drug awareness for parents. Last year, I know, you, you're aware that we launched the Drug and Alcohol Task Force, and that group has been working diligently to put resources in place for parents, building a website, putting all the tools together. And I talked with Mark Schuster and Dr. Ziegler, who were kind of championing that committee this year until we get our student services personnel back on board, to, to help us get the word out. So what we're doing is we're piggybacking an hour-long informational session, or actually half an hour, onto the one-to-one meetings for those parents that want to stay and learn about those resources, and that'll obviously be optional. The second thing that we did was we added the cyberbullying, bullying, sexting, and internet safety workshop that was canceled last year due to the inclement weather. We were able, after a lot of prodding, to get, to get them back on our calendar, so we're very excited about that. And that's scheduled for October the 30th at 7:30 PM, following the one-to-one parent meeting. So we'll do the one-to-one meeting for an hour, and then we'll do that presentation for an hour. So if parents can get out, they're going to get two things for, you know, in that same evening without having to have to come out another time. Additionally, we're working to put on parent math nights again, where parents actually experience some of the math instruction so that they can see how their students are learning in the classroom. And the same thing for the English Language Arts parent nights at all three elementary buildings. So I wanted you to be aware of that, and I also wanted you to know that we'll be doing a very focused communication out from the district, from the superintendent's office, in trying to continue to get the word out and remind parents about those opportunities for them. And the last thing that I wanted to mention under my report is, as you're aware, that the school performance profile is kind of looming on the horizon, and we've been waiting to see when the Pennsylvania Department of Education is going to be releasing that, that report. Friday afternoon, we received a draft preliminary data report that we could view, the central office administration had access to, to view it, to look at the information. So Monday, we met with our internal cabinet, so the principals could see what their building score looks like in a preliminary format, with the understanding that it was subject to change because we kept getting information about subject to change coming out from PDE. And they, they were saying that the release date was going to be tomorrow, the 24th of September. As of, I think, 6 o'clock this evening, I received another email from PDE indicating that that's likely not going to happen now, that there were errors in the data, and that they're continuing to make updates. So our principals have preliminary data, but I'm, you know, not able to release the data to the public until such time that it's actually accurate, and hopefully we'll be informed of that ahead of time. And I did put a draft letter that's going to be going home to parents in your packet so that you are aware of, of what we're putting together, and that will be adjusted as we get the official and accurate information. Thank you. And during our key communicators meeting, we will be going in depth into more detail about the reports. You'll be able to see the reports live when they go live. We couldn't even print the preliminary reports out for you because it wouldn't even stay, it wasn't in a format that you could print a report. It was, it didn't, it printed misaligned, you couldn't read it. I mean, it was only something you could read on the screen, on the web-based program with our secure login, so you'll be able to see that on Tuesday though, when we meet as a key communicator group, and then we'll do a subsequent follow-up meeting, a public board meeting for presentation of the data.
What time and where will the key communicators be?
The key communicators is here in the district office, and I believe it starts at, is it 7:30? 7:30? It's probably still on the sheet here, let me see. I'll make sure, I'll make sure I check, but I think it's 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Viola. With that, we're going to move on to public comment. We had one tonight, Mr. Bill Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me some time to address the board regarding an ongoing concern I have that does not appear to be improving. On the agenda this evening are again requests for significant expenditures. I have sat and observed, usually quietly, several board meetings, including during the last budget, quote, "season," and am dismayed over the perception that many seem to have on this board that there is no bottom to the barrel, that the district can spend and spend regardless of what it is able to spend. Let me be clear, I am a parent, a proud parent, I might add, of a recipient of the education that this board oversees, and I, like all, want the absolute best for my son. However, I also understand, having been both overseen by boards and having sat on two boards myself, that the decision-makers, you, for now, have to look at the whole picture, not just the latest and greatest gadget. This country has had, and has numerous great educators, that are able to educate without the latest and greatest. In reviewing a couple of your policies, I came across policy number 11. That states in part, quote, "An effective school board ensures that effective planning occurs by," it then lists several different things, one being, "adopting a financial plan that considers short-term and long-term needs." This board, despite what your own business manager advised was coming in the very near future, adopted a budget that not only raised taxes again on its citizens that have seen never-ending increases in their school taxes, but also gave no thought to long-term needs. Further down in the same policy that you as a board are bound by, it states, quote, "School boards must balance their responsibility to provide educational programs with the need to be effective stewards of public resources." Ladies and gentlemen, it seems to me that one might say that just about each one of you have violated and continue to violate your own policy. The community spoke up and began to clean house at the last election. However, that job is not done. We have, I believe, six positions open that need to be cleaned out. I will be running for one of those positions, and it is my understanding that Al Leach will as well. To the community, I urge you to not take it anymore. If you are a believer in public education and want what's best for our students and have an understanding that the money barrel is not bottomless, I call on you to stand up, step up, and join us as we make this the best district and best community in the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Item six is going to be the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Beginning with professional staff, I'm recommending that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
Motion to second. Any questions from anyone? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to support staff, I recommend that you approve the support staff items as submitted.
Motion to second. Any questions from anyone on the board? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the student-teacher assignments as submitted.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Close.
I recommend that you approve the miscellaneous item as submitted.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to business, I recommend that you authorize the administration to execute an agreement with Green Valley Academy as submitted.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to execute an agreement with KenKraft Services as presented.
Any questions from anyone?
I actually have one, and I don't remember if it's this one, but I think it is. One of our special ed items had an 8% increase from last year, and I guess my que, I've been meaning to ask this question for a while. Recognizing that we have little choice with a lot of these second, special education placements in terms of providing services, do we have the ability to push back or look for alternative vendors when there are price hikes that are unreasonable? And I'm not saying that 8% in this case is unreasonable, it's just sort of a, it seems like they've got you over a barrel, you know? They just raised their prices, and we're at the mercy of the providers. So I've been meaning to ask how we go about that.
Well, I mean, essentially, it's, it's an IEP team decision, and there's pendency in a, in a, in a placement. So that would have to be an IEP team decision that would recommend an alternative placement, but typically, we don't recommend alternative placement for cost. It would be based on what the students' needs are, and if the student's doing well in a placement, it's difficult to get a parent to want to just move the student to a different placement. So you're right, we are sort of over a barrel, although we can, you know, discuss it with the, obviously with the provider, it's not something that we can just unilaterally make the decision.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that we authorize, that you authorize the execution of an agreement with Associated Healthcare Personnel Incorporated as presented.
Motion to second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the purchase of 120 wireless access points for the Potts Grove High School as presented.
Motion, any second. Any questions or comments?
There were a lot of questions and comments that, that surfaced from this agenda item on social media, so I guess the big question was, is this for the high school project or is this for one-to-one? Or both? And will the middle school also need 120 access points? Was another question that was raised. And why do we need so many? Was another question that was raised. And gosh, $800 a pop seemed very expensive to members of the public. So could somebody just fill us all?
I'll let Mr. Wagman, he'd be the best person to answer this. Can you use the microphone?
Let's see if I remember the questions. The first one is, is it for the high school renovation project or for the one-to-one? The answer is it's for the high school renovation project. I told you when we were talking about the one-to-one that we had the infrastructure to handle the one-to-one, and that it, that is the case. The issue is that our access points right now are end-of-life in terms, they'll be supported for another two or three years, but they're not sold anymore. They're, they're, you know, they are at end-of-life. And we felt, and I think we had discussed this, you know, when we were discussing the renovation, that we were doing new internet wiring, and we felt that it was appropriate to put the new access points in the high school. The other question about the middle school is, yes, eventually, the middle school will, will need them, and because, again, they're, the access points at the high school are now seven, now seven years old. Middle school, about the same age, perhaps a year newer, and, and then ultimately, probably over time, we'll be, we'll have to redo the entire district. But at this point, this seems like the appropriate time as we're getting spaces turned over to us to phase in the new access points. Are they, you know, a better technology than what we have currently? Yes. And, you know, I think that that's clear. As far as the number, we have about 60 instructional spaces, classrooms on, yeah, roughly 60, so there would be one for each classroom space. We have large spaces that would require multiple access points, and we have other public areas, so the total, that's what gives you the total. As far as the price, these particular access points are the next generation of the ones we currently have. They're made by Aruba. We've had very good luck with the ones we've, that we, we currently have, so we, we took the, the one that they now currently market in place of the one that we purchased seven years ago, the model we purchased seven years ago. They retail for about $1,000 per, so the slightly over $800 per unit is, you know, is a, you know, very competitive, a very competitive price. Did I get all those questions or is it? Okay.
Michael, if you don't mind, I have two more I'll ask while you're there. One is, do we have any plans to repurpose the ones that are currently in the high school?
Yes, we're going to keep the, yes.
And let me get a second question real quick, is, would the price be any higher if we bought less?
No, we, we had, the vendor guaranteed the price regardless of the quantity, and the, as far as, she let me answer that first.
Repurposing the ones we currently have in the high?
Yes. We will, as, as a need arises, we will add access point capacity to other areas. When we did, when we did the wireless project seven years ago, it was somewhat different instructional environment. We didn't wire, we didn't put access points in our gymnasium. Now we have physical education teachers, particularly at the middle school, that are using mobile devices in the gym, and, and we have weak, we have weak wireless signals there. So, so we'll be repurposing them for some large public, you know, larger spaces that weren't considered seven years ago with the existing lot. Plus, you know, it'll be, if an access point fails, since we can't actually get these particular access points anymore, we'll probably use the existing stock to replace them as, as needed around the district.
Just one more, just clarification. Actually, I know the answer, but I just want to clarify it. The, this being part of a high school project is the third in a suite of three items that were not included in the construction bidding process for specific reasons.
Right.
Can you just?
Certainly.
Reiterate that?
Yeah, there were a few reasons why there were some key items that we did not include in, in the, in the bidding process. And I think, as I mentioned, with the video projection systems, the main reason is that we can do better price-wise going out ourselves, using state contracts, we're sales tax exempt. If we went through the vendor, they would pass on the sales tax cost to us because they have to absorb it, they don't get the benefit of contract, contract pricing. The other reason is, quite honestly, I have a very hands-on technology staff. We don't like to be three, four, five steps removed from the process that, that creates the infrastructure that we then have to support and live with. So we really wanted to take a hands-on approach to, to the network and to the, to the audio, audio/video, and I think you can probably say the same thing, the same answer applies to the security system, which I think was the third.
Michael, one thing, I had, we had requested just a list of these projects that are outside of the, the original bids, so, so that we're not surprised every time that we, we see these. So is it, is it possible we can, we can still have that?
If, yes, if I present any more projects outside the scope, then it will be, I'll be more surprised than you, I believe, as far as I know at this point, and again, I'm going to, no, those were the only two we withheld from the, from the project.
Got it.
Sorry, Mike, I have one more question.
Sorry, Mike, I have one more question. Every time you have pause. Um, was this, I remember the last time we voted on something, it was, um, that we had planned for this in the budget at the beginning of the year. We knew this was coming. The reason that we're having a separate vote, the last time we did this, the reason we had a separate vote was because we had to, um, approve the vendor. Was this something that originally wasn't budgeted and now we're putting it in the budget? But, or we just, this was planned in the budget and we're just voting on it because we have to approve the vendor?
Yes. It was planned. We were, uh, we were planning to do, uh, new wireless infrastructure in the high school. And, um, since we decided to pull that from, from the project and handle that in-house, you have to vote on it as a separate item.
Any other questions or comments?
I just remembered. Um, the last, uh, when we did the security cameras, in fact, I suggested that we, um, put it in the capital projects fund and instead, we paid for it out of the high school renovation soft cost budget. In fact, uh, so I moved that we'd put it in the capital fund and everybody voted against it, um, which is fine, but, but now this one is in the capital projects, um, fund. So can somebody explain why this one is in that, is there and not in the soft costs and the other ones weren't?
I'd be happy to. At our, at the meeting in August, when we approved the security cameras and the, uh, projector program, the security cameras were also paid for out of the capital reserve fund. The only item that was incorporated in the soft cost was the projector, uh, portion of the project. Uh, that's because we had sufficient, uh, availability in our soft cost budgets to cover that, that expenditure. We didn't feel that the amount available in the soft cost budget would also, uh, be large enough to, to cover this. That is why we're recommending paying for it out of the capital reserve fund.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'm recommending that you approve the purchase and installation of 33 two-camera systems from FamTAC Surveillance, the lowest responsible bidder, as presented.
So moved.
Second, uh, motion, second. Any questions or comments?
Just, um, can someone explain what this is for, uh, for the public?
Yeah, Dave can fill in the blanks, but essentially, um, several years ago, we had started a conversation about trying to get more safety and security on our buses and having a camera in the front and a camera in the back. And that's been a long-range goal for us. And it's, it's coming to fruition at this point where we were able to, um, plan for that through the capital project. And thus, it's coming as a recommendation at this time, try to complete the project.
Can I just add that this is only for the vehicles that are not, do not currently have cameras in them? So it's not our whole fleet.
I think this is a good idea and a good investment for us. Yeah, so, um, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into agreement with Sweet Stevens, Katz &amp; Williams LLP as presented.
Motion and a second, any questions?
Same question, can you just give some background on this?
Um, I, I think the board understands that we have a, we belong to a pool council with Sweet Stee-- Stevens, Katz &amp; Williams for special education information. And what that is, is it's a very vast knowledge base because when a special educator asks a question, um, it's answered by one of their attorneys who happens to be, um, renowned in the area of special education. Thus, all of the administrators from around the districts that belong to the pool council receive information about that issue. Uh, we, we came, through conversations with them, through that pool council, we became aware of the service for, uh, technology. And we felt that it, with, you know, changing world that we have, with the one-to-one initiative, with all of the things that we're doing in the district, looking at new policies, rolling the, the one-to-one out, becoming more, um, technolog- technologically literate in terms of, um, using technology as a tool across all of our classrooms, that it would behoove us to belong to this organization so that we could ask questions and receive answers without having to ask our attorney and be billed for their time to respond. So we can ask the question and we're not billed for the time to ask the question. Plus, we're learning about things that come up in other districts, so we don't make the same mistakes. It's kind of a proactive approach to learning. And in addition to this, they offer two days of professional development that we can have them come out and work with our teachers or our support staff or whomever. And we just felt that for that amount of money, it was, it was a bargain to get all that we could get with that, um, with that service.
That was kind of what I was thinking is that it, um, in a sense, it's an investment. Um, uh, you know, you might have a year where you don't have any legal fees by the hour, but then you could have a year where you could have a ton more that this might circumvent. So it's, it made sense to me from that perspective.
Can I, can I, I just wanted to clarify, um, it's two half-day, so it's one full day, but we'll probably do a couple of evening programs if we can for, or at least one evening program for parents and probably something for our students or teachers. But I wanted to clarify that even if we were not, uh, going down, uh, the one-to-one road, uh, having become aware of the existence of a technology pool council, given issues around social media, um, issues, uh, related to student privacy and technology, uh, you know, uh, we also, we've had a one-to-one for our faculty since 2008. There are lots of issues aside from, uh, from one-to-one related issues that the pool council can, can assist us with. And honestly, uh, many of the districts in the pool council are not one-to-one districts. So I would have asked for your approval on our membership in the technology pool council, whether or not, uh, we were a one-to-one district because quite honestly, it's a, it's a very tricky landscape, um, out there, uh, as you're, as you're probably aware. So, um, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to education, I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the overnight trip as presented.
So moved. Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the training attendance as presented.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments from anyone at the table?
Just, then I'm going to be voting no for this as the representative for the, uh, MCIU. I feel that we should be, uh, making better use of their services. And for that reason, I'll be voting no on this.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. Um, on that, being new, I, I, why do we, why don't we use our own? If, like, somebody could help me with that.
Yes. Um, I, I didn't feel that they had the resources, um, to present in the history that I've had working with them through these initiatives for teacher effectiveness and principal effectiveness, that they were, that they were going to offer the best service to us with the best expertise in putting this forward. The Bucks IU has been working at this for a while. What I've seen in the differences between the two, I know that the Montgomery County IU is growing toward becoming, um, better at providing those services. But at this point, I felt that the presenters and that the presentations that they put together and the staff development is stronger at the Bucks County IU. And, um, I wanted to, the Montgomery County IU is kind of getting back on its feet and moving things forward. And I'm certain in the future that they're going to be able to provide the same type of service with the same type of resource pool that the Bucks IU has. But I just, at this point, I didn't feel for this particular project that they were the right resources. We have used them for other things, particularly the special education supervisor that we have on staff right now, three times, three days a week, um, filling in for the supervisor of special ed position because they did have the availability of resources to provide that. But frankly, they, they, they've been operating on a, a very low resource budget and it's difficult to provide the same level of service, um, as the Bucks IU. And until they start to build revenue through some other avenues, they're just not able to, they just don't have the resource.
Sort of a catch-22 though, because if we don't use them, then they, uh, then, then we, uh, make it harder for them to do just what you're saying.
They just have, they'd have to develop their niche in, in what they're good at and then promote that and then sell service outside of maybe Montgomery County, which is what the Bucks IU does and the Berks IU and the Chester IU. And, I mean, frankly, for, for me, it's a matter of providing the best professional development possible for our principals and for our administrators and making sure they're comfortable with these large mandates. Typically, what happens from PDE is they roll out an initiative and they, they'll train the IU people supposedly to roll it out. What they train them with is, um, here's what's mandated in the legislation and here's what's, you know, suggested as optional ways of doing things. Now you figure it out. The, the Montgomery IU will regurgitate that information and then we have to figure it out at the local level. But the Bucks IU's approach has been is they'll take the information, they'll sift through it, like, they, they brought in a retired superintendent, Bob Laws, from Central Bucks. They're working on, now, how would a practitioner need to have this information in order to make it useful for the local school district? And then they'll make the presentation and the professional development in that way so that it's easy for, easier for us to implement at the local level. And that's what I'm looking for at this point because we have so many competing initiatives. And we've had the teacher effectiveness project rolled out last year. Now this is the principals effectiveness project this year. Trying to keep all the balls in the air is really difficult and I felt that we needed that support that they could offer. So that's why I was making the recommendation. They're still going to charge us for service. It's, which one?
Just my opinion on this is that we should go with the provider that's going to give us the best service. And if that's the Bucks IU, then that's. And also, if, it sounds like, um, contracting through the Bucks County, they're going to give us the resources that are, that will save a significant amount of time for, for you and also for our principals. And anything that can save, especially our principals, they're so busy, anything that can make their job easier and give them more time to work with the kids instead of having to figure out legislation, to me, makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I recommend that you approve the miscellaneous item as presented, as submitted, sorry.
So moved. Motion and a second, any questions or comments?
I had a question on the, and, and I have to preface this by saying, I have not been to the policy committee, so this may have been discussed in committee. But, um, I read through, I, I've read through these policies and I read especially in, um, 23, or 237.1, which is the governing one-to-one secondary. Um, and it's on page three of four, so it's number five. Um, and what this is, is it's talking about, um, employees looking into a review in the files stored on the mobile, the mobile device. So basically, the, um, that district employees, unless they, um, have reasonable suspicion that something untoward is happening on, on the devices, that they cannot access those devices, um, without, um, permission. Um, what I, my worry is, you know, having a, a student in the high school. Um, and it says, um, reasonable suspicion means reasonable grounds exist that the search will uncover evidence that the student violated the law or school rules or district policies. Um, so I have two questions on that. Number one, have we, do we need to state that if there is unlawful material found on one of these computers, I'm assuming it will then be turned over to authorities? Do we need to state that in our policy or is that just taken as?
I think that, uh...
No.
You always have the right when you find, whether it be an illegal substance, whether it be this material, uh, you know, whether it be pornograph or something on the computers, you always have a right, it's no different unfortunately than if you see an altercation, an assault, a battery, you have the right to turn it over to the police. I don't believe you have to say you're going to turn a criminal act over to the police.
Um, I was just worried about that because there's probably going to be other material on that computer that belongs to the student, um, you know, so I didn't know if that needed to be enumerated in the policy.
It's not unlike when the police search your car, you know, they'll see things that they're looking for and there'll be other items that may be innocent.
That they find. Okay. Um, my other, my other thing is, you know, in the day of, in this day of videos and, and pictures and things like that, there's a fine line between inappropriate and unlawful. Um, are we going to have any, um, training or, um, guidance for the students as to things that are, we, we don't want anyone to get into the area of doing something that is unlawful unknowingly. I mean, most of us know what is inappropriate and what is unlawful, but there is a fine line between inappropriate and unlawful when you come to images and videos. Um, so will the students or the parents, I mean, when we have the, the one-to-one, is that something that we can, um, put into that or, I mean, sometimes it needs to be written out for students. This is inappropriate and this is unlawful. And if we find this, it will be turned over to the authorities.
Michael, do you want to answer what you plan on exactly for the one-to-one? But I, I mean, I, I would say that we do have ongoing conversation with students, that's part of education. And we've had computers in the classrooms that we've been using for some time now. So those conversations are happening with our teachers and with, with our, our staff.
And, you know, and, and storage, um, on our hard drives, that's been, you know, our servers, that has, um, that of course has been in place for years now. Uh, what makes this different is the take-home component of it kind of changes the equation. And, um, so we spoke with a number of districts and these policies reflect Lower Marion's position after the issues that they encountered. Uh, now, as far as, uh, student education, the answer is yes, we will be doing, uh, we'll be approaching this from a number of different angles. The pool council is certainly, is certainly one angle. We will be covering, um, the policies with the parents at those meetings. Uh, we are going to be having student meetings as well. Um, and so we will be, uh, we, we certainly will be addressing those, those issues. And again, um, the policy really does go a long way in protecting, protecting students. Um, and, you know, uh, we, you know, we agree, I mean, students have certain responsibilities, but we also acknowledge that they have certain rights to privacy, which is, uh, really the nature of, of this, of this policy. So, um, we would need reasonable cause, we would have a protocol in place that would very clearly define how the computer is handed off, who's present when the, you know, when the computer is examined, um, and all, you know, and so that, those will all be made operational through the administrative regulations. But your point is very well-taken and yes, we will be, we'll have ongoing conversations with, with students before and after, um, the, the implementation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the policies? Uh, just before we vote, I just want to make a comment, especially on policy 004, uh, and thank, uh, Mr. Robinowitz, Mr. Alexander, on the policy committee for keeping, uh, this a priority for us to take a look at how we, uh, bring new members onto, uh, the board when there's a vacancy. And I think, uh, the, the work that they put in, it was thoughtful process that includes the community and everyone at large so that, uh, you know, there's fairness and decency in our process. So again, thank you for that. And, uh, so that's a monumental thing for us at Potts Grove and also for surrounding districts also to take a look at and see how replacements are done, uh, in the future. And, uh, this, this is done with fairness and also with, uh, um, what's that word we keep throwing around, around here? Uh, transparency. There we go. Uh, it's some transparency to it. So with that, uh, all those in favor of the policies? Aye, opposed?
Justin, I think Dr. Shirke also deserves a big thank you for his work, I'll give that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Be so quiet, I've... For now. All right. And, yeah. Discussion items.
This evening, we have one discussion item that we wanted to speak to you about, was the middle school cooling tower is, Mike going to speak, or, Mike, have you come up to the microphone?
At our last facilities committee meeting last Tuesday, we again discussed the study that Moore Engineering Company had performed for us last year, last school year, on the cooling tower at the middle school. And, bless you. At the, at the end of last school year, we, we were discussing it in committee, and with the start of the high school project, we kind of put it off until the beginning of the school year. So we re, we had to revisit it this year, probably sooner than we were expecting, because early in, in the school year, fortunately, after the hottest of, of our weather had passed, we had a failure of one of the shafts on the cooling tower at the middle school. So we, we brought it up for discussion, and the committee felt that my recommendation, which I'm here to discuss with the full board tonight, in moving forward with getting Moore Engineering on board to begin the specification process and preparing bids to go out for repairing the cooling tower. The, the report that was prepared by Moore Engineering included the repair of the existing unit or replacement of the, the existing unit. And upon further investigation and inspection of the cooling tower itself, I don't feel that it's necessary for us to incur the cost of replacing the entire unit. The bulk of the, of the unit is in very good shape, we're not experiencing any interior, exterior rusting of the shell of the cooling tower. It's the interior components, shafts, bearings, and the fan components that are starting to deteriorate. Unfortunately, I was hoping to have a proposal tonight from Moore Engineering on what their fees would be to begin that process for us, but Mr. Kaufman is on vacation and was not able to prepare something for tonight's meeting. So I will be bringing that again forward to the board at a later date. I believe everyone is kind of familiar with the, the problem that we're experiencing at the middle school, but I'd like to just recap that again for everyone's interest. The cooling tower is situated on an area by the loading dock of the middle school, which is concealed from the rest of the building. It's very hard to see unless you drive around to the upper baseball fields. And behind the cooling tower is a curtain wall constructed of concrete block. That concrete block wall, it was intended to hide the monster cooling tower from, from view. And what that has created is a vortex effect of the vaporized air from the cooling tower being pulled back down through that void between the cooling tower and the curtain wall, and being drawn back into the cooling tower, creating this premature failure of the shaft and bearings and whatnot. So part of the process will be for us to evaluate that curtain wall and do a partial removal, maybe some replacement of some, some fencing material, something that's going to allow better airflow and not create that vortex pull back down into the cooling tower. The, the committee was very supportive of the process that we'd like to move forward on. I wanted to bring it up for board discussion tonight to see if there was full favor of moving forward in the direction that it presented to the committee.
My question is, and I think obviously you've thought this through, but if we just do the partial replacement now, how long will it be before the remaining components are likely to be in need of replacement as well?
When it comes to moving parts, we will pretty much be replacing 100% of all the moving parts. The remainder is, is the shell of the cooling tower itself. The interior baffles, the shafts, the bearings, everything internal, we, we may have a motor failure at some point in time, but basically, everything internal of the cooling tower will be replaced through this process. It would save us about $100,000 rather than replacing the entire unit.
Mike, I think you want to add, too, that this also includes replacing and doing something else with the wall that's causing the problem, right?
That's correct. Yes, we would definitely evaluate the wall and make sure that we're avoiding the effect that's created this premature failure.
Didn't you also say that you were hoping to do some of it in-house to, to...
Once we have an evaluation of what's happening with the curtain wall, we will look at what our staff is capable of doing, possibly some demolition of that curtain wall prior to a fencing contractor coming in and, and making those more permanent installations.
Just for your benefit, the, and you can do that, and Mike knows that, just for the board's benefit, there is a limit to school code to how much you can do internally with your own staff. It's $20,000, so we are somewhat limited, but I'm sensing that the demolition won't be that much.
Correct.
I, I definitely think, I mean, we, we need cooling in, in the middle school, that's something that we definitely want to have. So I have two questions. Is it something that could be done, like, over the winter before the hot weather?
That would be our plan. The cooling tower is a two-stage unit, so we are running at 50%. Fortunately, the weather conditions have been very favorable, and moving forward, I would expect that to be the same. I can expect that we're going to have many more 90-degree hot humid days where we would need full, full cooling, cooling of the, of the condensed water. So I think we're in a, a good position where we can get these repairs, the specs written by Moore Engineering, we can get the project out for bid, and we can get the repairs done over the winter months, preparing for full operation next spring.
And I guess my next question is probably more for Dave. Considering we have these significant capital projects that are happening, as we look at the Capital Reserve Fund and the status of that fund, I know a lot of, a lot, we have a very good credit rating, and a lot of that has to do with good planning and also having, you know, a good rainy day Capital Reserve Fund. How do you feel about the status of our Capital Reserve Fund once we pay for this? And, and also what's tied up in escrow for the construction?
Yeah. In your packet, I had provided you with a, a snapshot of where we stand in the Capital Reserve Fund today. And I think we still have a very strong Capital Reserve Fund. However, as part of the high school renovation project, we do have a $2.4 million escrow that we have to post. That's money we will get back at the end of the project, but for example, we still have $197,000 in the Ringing Rocks escrow fund. So it, it takes a while to dot the i's, cross the t's, and get everybody to agree to release the funds. So that will bring our, our available balance down to a fairly low level, about $3.5 million. That's as of today, without approving, prior to approving the two projects that you approved tonight, and obviously prior to approving the repair of the, the cooling tower. So that'll be pulling us down close to the $3 million mark. As we talk, and we'll probably be at the next meeting, of what to do with our surplus for this year, we will have a surplus. It's not been completely quantified yet, we're trying to wrap up the work for the audit right now, but I hope to have that information out to you before the next meeting for consideration. That's an option for how to utilize those funds. And also, as I indicated before, we're now going to be getting funds from the Ringing Rocks, financing of the Ringing Rocks project, we hope. We've been approved for it, and we'll see how quickly they, they supply the funds. But that may be a, a use of that money, too. We can use that for any general fund expenditure, but it's the board's discretion how to use it. So I think it would be prudent to add some funds to the Capital Reserve, because we have been hitting it with some relatively large projects over the last year and a half.
So typically, in the past, what has been the level that we've kept the Capital Reserve at, and what are you, are you comfortable with?
Prior to going into any work on the high school, we had approximately $7 million in, in the Capital Reserve Fund. As I said, at this point, we're about $6 million, and we're, you know, depending on what we have coming down the, coming in the future for other, other renovation projects, other improvement projects, we may need to have some of that. The other thing I want to, I want to focus on is more of a long-term perspective, which is with the financing of the high school project as we intended it, we're able to do it without any increases in, in property taxes for that project, but we're using all of our debt capacity through 2028. So anything that happens between now and 2028, we are either going to have to pay for out of our Capital Reserve Fund, or consider borrowing money and potentially raising taxes at that point. So, you know, being prudent, I would say, the money, if we have some, some surpluses at this point, it would probably be prudent to hang on to them and use them to bolster this fund so that we, you know, if a roof failure takes place, or if a mechanical system fails somewhere down the road, that we have enough funds to, to cover us through that term.
So I'll be returning back in October with a proposal from Moore Engineering that we can discuss further. And I believe we have a committee meeting scheduled that same night, so I think we can review that prior, before we bring it to the board for action.
And Mike, I remember probably going back a year and a half, maybe even two years, discussions about this cooling tower and the problems that the curtain wall were causing. Was there a set of repairs done then, and this is another repair, or is this just the repair that's been in the works the whole time?
This is the repair that's been in works the whole time. Our initial discussions were to initiate the, the study from Moore Engineering. That was the study that we had returned back last year, and we never really took any action at that point, because the high school project kind of took priority, and we put it on the back burner.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
I'd like to recommend that you accept the minutes from, from our meeting on 9/16. I just might highlight that two of the, two of the items, the, the discussion of the, the cooling tower, as well as the cameras, were part of our, our discussion at that, at that meeting, so. You would accept those minutes?
Motion second, any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Do need to announce that the board will be having an executive session after the meeting tonight for personnel reasons. And moving on to new business. Any new business?
I would just like to remind everybody, this Saturday, it's not on our calendar here, but the sock, high, high school soccer team will be having Friends Helping Friends, a friendly tournament, and our goal is to raise over $1,000 for the cancer center. And that fund goes directly to the patients today. So it's a reminder, I hope to see everybody there.
Any other new business?
What I have alerted everybody to, that we need to make our selections, so that I can register our vote online for the PSBA leadership.
Thanks, Diane.
I was just hoping that we would all agree on the PSBA recommended choices. Actually had an opportunity to speak with a member of the Potts Town School Board who sits with me at MCIU, and he was on the committee. And they went through a pretty exhaustive research and vetting process in terms of their recommended picks. And I, I think that it would behoove us to just go that route, but I defer to everybody else. I just wanted to pass on, his name's Ron Williams, and he's pretty well-known in the area, and he was pretty, well, pretty heavily involved, and therefore, I feel pretty comfortable with going that route.
And of course, this is my first time walking through this, and it, it looks to me like there were really only two positions, thank you, two positions that had more than one person, and one was the president, and there was one that was endorsed, that was Kathy Swope from Lewisburg, and then the other was the representative at large from the East District. And that endorsed person was Robert Schwartz from Wall and Paw Pack in Pike County, so...
Rick, if I could just clarify, so the gentleman that you spoke to was someone who helped choose the endorsed candidates?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, and you, you feel fairly confident that they were capable of making an informed decision on that?
They certainly did. They were capable of making that decision.
Okay, thanks.
Diane, when does that information do for the...
The vote has to be placed by October 5th.
So last year, what we did was, we just took everyone's vote and tallied it, whoever, this is one vote per, for the board, so...
For board.
You know, we're, last year, we went that route anyway, we went with the recommendations from the PSBA, so...
Well, there are only two that are...
Sure.
Couldn't we just make a motion to, to accept the...
The two that are endorsed.
The two that are endorsed, and obviously, we're voting for all the others anyway.
Sure. I'm fine with that. So moved. Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank, thank you.
Any other new business? The only other thing I had was Friday night's football game is our, honoring our veterans for Friday night, and would like to see as many people out as we can, would like to see as many veterans out so that we can honor them and thank them for their service to our country. I believe also the veterans get in for free, was what I heard. I think if they don't, they do now. That'd be a nice gesture for them. But we, we just want to see as many people from the community out to honor our, our veterans and heroes, so thank you.
And Mr. Valentine, I think we have an honoree doing the, the coin toss, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Rossi, our veteran board member.
We didn't have any previous questions, and with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Second, all those in favor? Aye.